Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order. It is Tuesday, February 6th, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We missed that, too. Okay, any minutes on reports received and filed?
Yes, we have the Recorder's January 2024 fee, the County First January 2024 fee, and the Auditor's Revenue and Expenditure Report for January 2024.
Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Uh, so I'm gonna meet with the new district public defender over there at the Carnegie Building. They wanna talk about some maintenance things and questions and stuff. So, I'll meet with them for a bit. Thursday, City Public Works and Planning Committee Meeting, Jefferson City Convention and Visitors Bureau Athletic Against Dinner, Co-County Chiefs Meeting. Saturday, I think, is the Menlo Hardball.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I'll be off that one. We got a Ford to the Lions fantasy like that, right? And Sunday's the Super Bowl, which I'll be like the Dallas Cowboys at home watching it on my couch. Just before you all can fill that out.
Today, at, I'm not sure of the time. I think it's 11:00 this morning. The new head coach, head football coach at Lincoln University is introduced. And on Wednesday is the Lions Ham and Bean Chili Event. Also, let's see, Wednesday is, Safety Net of Missouri is having a casino night at the Missouri Soybean Association. Thursday morning is City Public Works. Where's Eric? He's, I think. We often attend the City Public Works Meeting. And also on Thursday, LU, Lincoln University has a Founder's Event in the morning. An out-of-town speaker there. And on Monday, ARPA Centertown is on our schedule.
Yes, and a little, for Ham and Bean, Harry and I are both members of the Lions Club, so anybody needs tickets, they can come see us. And then tomorrow, I have a Sons of the Union Veterans Meeting at 4:30. We had traffic and safety, but Eric postponed it till the 29th, and we're at the lake. Thursday, United Way Annual Meeting, Chiefs Meeting. Saturday, Sons of the American Revolution Meeting, and the Hardball, Super Bowl. And then Monday, I've got a meeting down at City Hall. So, that is all I've got. Okay, bids and contracts. Approval of the 911 Communications Staffing Analysis Proposal with Mission Critical Partners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chief Wildy is here with us today. Chief Schofield is trying to make it from another meeting. We'll see if he can make it by the time we're done here. But if you recall, several weeks ago, we approached the Commission with a request to undertake a 911 staffing study. At that time, we had identified Mission Critical Partners off of state contract for the work that they're doing for the state off of Next Gen 911. You all approved moving forward utilizing the prepaid cellphone tax as the means to fund this study, which then meant the county would then be the lead consumer on this project. So, we've approached Mission Critical. They produced the study proposal, which should've come to your email several weeks ago. One thing of note, the proposal was a little bit more than expected, and I just wanted to talk about that. I believe we ballparked somewhere in the high $50,000 range. The project price came back at $64,866. We did meet with Mission Critical last week and just talked through that a little bit. And what they announced is, or told us is, we're actually getting two studies in one because we're looking at both centers independently and then evaluating from there. So their scope of work is a little bit bigger than what it would be for this type of project at a single agency. They have outlined all of their scope of work and their timeframe in the proposal, and we are satisfied with their proposal. Jill has looked at the professional services agreement. Of note, there was just one section that had to do with open records. We did clarify and get a response from Mission Critical that they were fine with the language and compliance with the Missouri Sunshine Law. So, the professional services agreement is ready for approval and signing. Just ask that you take action on that today, have the answer to questions.
Will the cellphone tax still pay for that, then?
Yes, yes. I believe there's over six figures in that.
Okay.
Okay.
I was just curious if we had to come up with the rest of it, so.
I can't remember, Debbie. I think the last we looked at it, we had like a hundred and six thousand or something in that account. But that was a while back.
Budget at 108, and I don't see any of it in cover.
Does the Chief of Police wanna argue with the Chief of EMS as to whether or not he said everything correctly here?
Well, I think he is, he's on point, and I wouldn't pick on him in public or anything, no. He's doing a good job. I just, I wanna, I appreciate your consideration of this today, 'cause, boy, it's been six, eight years ago, I think, when I was running the 911 Center, and there were, there were still questions going on then about if what we were doing was correct and whether it was right size for our community. And I think it's important that we bring in a, kind of an outside look of industry professionals to give us that assessment and move forward. So I appreciate you considering this. I think it's gonna answer a lot of questions for us in the near term, and it's gonna create a lot more questions in the long term as to where do we go from here. I know that we've talked with Mission Critical Communications about following this up potentially with a facility study. Once we figure out what the right size is for our center, then what, what does that facility look like? So, my goal, and I think it's the goal of everyone involved in the 911 arena, is get to the point where we've got a package of recommendations from Mission Critical that we can talk about as directors and as leaders of our agencies and as well as elected officials and come up with the next path. So I appreciate this being step one down what could be a road of considerations to make in the future.
One of the things that I will just add in the conversation with Mission Critical is segueing into the next step if we do undertake a facility study. They did acknowledge that the scope of this probably would cross over into some of the scope of the facility study. So while this may be a larger upfront cost, the facility study might be, should be less than what a normal facility study would be. Just some ballpark numbers that have been thrown around. We do feel that it will be really close to the amount that we already have saved in that cellphone tax to get both studies done. So, I feel good about that.
The money, the money trickles into that sales, or, I'm sorry, the sell tax on a regular basis?
Quarterly.
Quarterly?
We had quarterly payments, yeah.
Okay.
Can't think of the amount. Typical amount off the top of my head, uh...
It's about $4,000, forty-four something.
Quarterly?
Okay, fine.
Everybody's had a chance to look at it then?
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve and sign the professional services agreement between Mission Critical Partners and Co-County Commission for the 911 Communications Staffing Analysis Proposal.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, chief.
I would ask that we could adjust the agenda to go down to the discussion of CAD server upgrade, because that has to do with Chief Wildy. Also, we'll get him on here quicker, because I don't like him in County Golden.
We will do that, sir. Yes, okay, then we will, uh...
Comments and feelings of the sheriff are his own.
At least I got him on the record.
Oh, we got him. I'll say we will go to the discussion of CAD server upgrade.
Okay, so thank you. This conversation started at our last meeting talking about the staffing study. Every year, Tyler Technologies provides a universal update to our computer-aided dispatch system. In order to implement those updates, the servers have to have certain capabilities. So Lieutenant Stefferman, who handles the majority of the IT related to this stuff, did acknowledge that for the 2025 CAD upgrade, the city would need to upgrade their server cluster to support it. Basically, the operating system of the current servers would not be able to support the next update. So we did talk about this. Currently, the city and county split the cost of 911 hardware 7525, so the county's obligation would be 25% of the total cost. The proposal, an estimated cost of the project is $21,624. This is kinda time-sensitive, and Chief Wildy can hop in on this, but there is a push to get this ordered before May, before the next price increase comes into play. But this would not be a project that would really probably spur its head until the end of the year or as we get into 2025. So the county's portion of this would be $5,406, and that would be split between the sheriff and I, 50/50. So just wanted to have a little update on that. I believe Chief Wildy was comfortable paying for the project upfront and then submitting a bill to the county once the work had been completed. So I'll turn it over to you.
I don't know if there's anything I can add to that other than that we're constantly looking two to three years out to see what we need to do to keep our system current, and that's where we're at right now, is that the servers, we gotta start with those first to get those in place. And as Chief Boye pointed out, we're, we're running up a deadline, against a deadline to get those at a reduced cost, because they will go up after May.
Well, and to go further, I think the way that email read was there's two times, there's two different things we're hitting. One is, we gotta do it before May, so the price costs is there. But the other one is, we have to get in line to be able to get that done. So if not, then we apply for it, and then they, and then they do it. They put us in line, whoever's next. So the sooner we get this paid and get in line to it, the sooner we get it done. And that's why when Chief Boye said it could be the end of the year, it's not because they're not gonna have the money, it's because that's the timeframe that they have to do it and they're spacing it out.
And Chief and Sheriff both are, got the money to do this, the, out of the contingency?
I think both of us like to come out of contingency, yes.
Right, okay.
So, I don't know, maybe a formal motion that we would approve the county's portion of the server upgrade. We don't have a contract or anything like that.
Okay. I, I'll make that motion to approve the county portion, which is now estimated to be $5,406 for the CAD server upgrade, which will be 75% funded by Jefferson City.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
The city will bill us for our portion.
Okay. So we'll go back to our agenda. CART Facility Operator MOU Amendment.
So, as we've talked about, we've been working with Capital Logistics and Capital Oil Terminals to develop out the CART facility. Agreed to go with them as our operator, and our first step was to sign an MOU to start developing the plans to ultimately end in an operating agreement. We've decided it'd be best to do an amendment to the MOU to just extend the timeframe until we would sign an actual operating agreement. And the reason is, now that the CART facility is done, mostly, we still have the one tract to complete there by the oil terminals, but it is to the point now that we can start accepting cars in there. They're developing some business, prospective business, and as that develops, there's things that will have to happen onsite to accommodate that, and it would be best to learn that a little bit more before we go down and actually sign an actual operating agreement. So with that, we wanna do an MOU amendment just to extend the current MOU to June 30th of this year, and that'll give time to develop all this, have some clients in place, and then know what they need and what their facility and equipment needs will be, and then sign the operating agreement. So this is just a simple, two-page amendment to the MOU extending the timeframe. I'd recommend it. And Jill has reviewed it. Any questions?
Nope, I'm good. I'll make a motion to sign the amendment to the memorandum of understanding between Co-County, Capital Oil Terminals, and Capital Logistics Company.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Then we will go to new business, Accounts Payable Review.
Motion to approve Accounts Payable Pending Review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
First reading of Budget Adjustment Number One.
This is $60,397. This is the LEPC grant portion, and Nick talked to you guys about it. No action today. We'll bring it up in 10 days.
Okay. First reading of Budget Adjustment Number Two.
This is the other part of that. There's $7,765. It's the sheriff's part of that LEPC grant, and no action today. We'll bring it up in 10 days.
Okay. First reading of Budget Adjustment Number Three.
This is for $165,000. This was a grant for the juvenile department. Toby talked to you guys about it before. Epidemiology in lab for the state department. I'm not sure if that's what it's supposed to be, that's a multiple, but it's what we need. No action today, and we'll bring it back up in 10 days.
Okay. And we did the CAD server, so we will go to Approval of Public Works Department Equipment Purchases.
So we have several items, and we'll go through them line by line. And before we do that, I did wanna mention that we had, at the end of last year, we talked about taking some revenue received through Purple Wave surplus sales and putting it into the next year's equipment budget. I have an appropriation transfer there for $95,000 for that. I think just, communication just got mixed up on exactly what we needed to be put in for that. So the money that was in Purple Wave was just put into contingency with the budget, so we'll just take it out of contingency and put it into the equipment budget. So just wanted to mention that before we go down each line and make sure you're aware of that. So going through, we'll do the first. So that's a Coates Tire Machine and a Coates Wheel Balancer and Pin Plate, and this is for the central maintenance shop, and so it'll allow Tyler to change, basically, mount tires and balance, and we do, can do that in-house. We buy our own tires, and some of them you have outsourced to do.
Correct.
It'll allow us a lot more flexibility to do those in-house. So grand total for that, and it's with O'Reilly Auto Parts, is $21,570. So just need approval and signing of the bid proposal from O'Reilly Auto Parts.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the bid proposal for the tire machine with O'Reilly Auto Parts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the next items are with Henderson Products Incorporated. And so it's a 14-foot box spreader with stand, and it's two, and then 12-foot reversible snowplow, and that's also two units. And these will be used on the two cabin chassis that we ordered back in '22. We did an advanced order for those, and we're expecting those to come in this year. And so this would be just having the plows and spreaders available to add to that whenever they come in. So the, there's two separate quotes, and we'll do them separately. So the first one is gonna be the spreader with stands, and that total cost is $72,620. So if you wanna approve that one, or we can just do them combined, but there's, there's two separate quotes. The second one would be the two reversible snowplows, for a total of $31,422.
Harry, do one. You can do both of them.
Okay, right.
So that's the spreaders, and that's the plow.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the 14-foot box spreader with stand, two of them, for $72,620 with Henderson Products, Inc.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the 12-foot reversible snowplow, two of them, $31,422 with Henderson Products, Inc.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I should've said to start off also that these are through corporate purchasing through Sourcewell. Sourcewell and state contracts, and Jessica had reviewed and approved, so.
Okay.
It's assumed when we bring that to you that it's all checked out, I just wanted to mention that, so I should've mentioned that earlier.
Very good.
The next item is a Kubota SVL 97 Skidsteer. The total of that is, or, it's with Crown Powered Equipment Company through Sourcewell Contract, and it's $75,267.69, and it will replace a Bobcat S300 model that will be sold at surplus.
My turn?
Yeah.
Make the motion to sign. First, the green up for the Kubota Skidsteer with Crown Power and Equipment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the next two items are two mini excavators. We'll go through them separately, and, um, when we buy our first Bobcat, it's been...
Probably 2013 when I started.
About 10 years ago, we bought our first mini excavator, a Bobcat. We're going to surplus that one. That'll be on the, is that the 800 or the 80? That's the 57 that we're...
Oh, 57 is one we're on. It's more replace the...
So we got two of them. So the first one on here is the 800, or the 80 model, and that's a kind of a mid-range. It's a mini excavator, but it's middle-sized between a smaller unit and a full Traco. And we've learned and kind of adjusted and changed our operations to where that is gonna be very usable, and in some cases, dragging the whole Traco out there is not necessary if we have that decent machinery. So we're gonna purchase that, and that will, it'll be a, and an 80 model is the bigger one, and it'll also include a chipper, a rammer, hammer. And so there's two items on there. There's the mini excavator and the hammer, and so the grand total for that is $128,296.47. And that will replace the old Bobcat, the year model that we're at.
I'll make a motion to execute the contract for the purchase of the Kubota KX-080-4 Mini Excavator for $128,296.47.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the next one is the Kubota KX-057-5. It should say, in your sheets, it should say 5, 57-5, not 80-4. And that's the regular-sized mini excavator. And a couple of years ago, we bought a Kubota, an additional Kubota, so this'll be the second. It'll be the same model, so we'll have two of those. With this purchase, we're adding two hammers, not just one, and so the second hammer will go to that other Kubota that we've had a year and a half. So with this, we have the mini excavator and then the two hammers, and the grand total of that is $99,374.23.
It's like Christmas time.
It is. Well, it's after Christmas. It's the money we got for Christmas.
The gift certificates?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve purchase of the Kubota KX-080-4 Mini Excavator and the two Allied Rammer Hammers, 555Ps.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Yeah, I like that, Rammer Hammers.
You might like to do, come out if you wanna test drive one or something.
I wanna drive, I wanna drive the train.
Drive the train.
I wanna drive the train.
We can arrange for that, too.
Eric, do any, any of the equipment we just purchased, do they do a whack, a, a, you know, knock-out great job on gravel roads after an ice storm?
Well, the trucks, when we get them, would be able to haul rock to the gravel roads.
Okay.
And the spreader, well, the spreader would be, they do damage to gravel roads, so. But, uh, yeah, I'm sure you guys are getting plenty of emails and phone calls on gravel roads, and a little off-topic, but we can talk about it now. When we have an ice storm like that, unfortunately, that is the byproduct of that. It is, it takes, I'm telling Debbie, it takes two days to completely destroy a gravel road trying to treat it and get ice off of it, and it'll take two, two weeks to a month to fix them. And that's just, just the nature of what it is. There's nothing you can do about it unless we just don't plow the road, and then people can't get out, and that's not good for emergency services or anything else. So it's just the nature of the beast, and we do our best to get it fixed up. This time of year is probably the worst time to be fixing gravel roads because everything's so soft, and it's just not a good situation.
How many miles approximately do we have of gravel roads still?
About 1, 150 or so, 140, 150. It's gradually going down. We still have the gravel road upgrade program. We're under contract with an engineering company to design Hickory Hill. We just finished last, last year, the next one at the Leslie, North Rock Creek, and then there's others kind of in the mix that we're looking at. It's just, it's a long process, and it's very expensive to do it, so.
Some of the best roads, when it's dry, are the worst ones whenever this kind of event happens, because they dry up and they're like driving on pavement. So, other times they're...
They're a beast, so. But we, so anyway, with all the equipment purchases, Tyler prepares all this, takes a lot of time getting all these things lined out just right, and so just wanna commend Tyler for everything you did to get it prepared, and it's just a ongoing process, and we got a pretty good system in place to life cycle things out, and it's evolving. I think we got a pretty good handle on it to make sure we're not keeping stuff too long that become maintenance issues for us, and that's the reason for changing out this 10-year-old Bobcat and then the S300 with the new Kubota. Just trying to make sure we're changing out things when the right time is, so we're not dumping a bunch of money in maintenance and repairs. It could be better to do it with, and then less downtime.
Correct.
Anyway.
Okay.
Got one more item.
Okay.
That's another agenda item, so it's...
Oh, 2024?
Now, Approval of the Planning Department Purchases. At the very bottom there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that is the...
2024 Ford.
Yeah, so that is a 2024 Ford F-150 four-by-four crew cab, and that will be for the Planning Department, and that'll change out a 2006 model Ford F-150 number 248. That will be either sold at surplus or we'll rotate it down and sell another similar truck at surplus. So something will be surplus with this new purchase. And the amount is $48,209 with Joe Mokken's.
How long is that gonna take to get Tyler, you know, right offhand?
We had one that we ordered, actually, was, and we got it in like less than two months.
Okay.
So they're coming in pretty quick.
Okay, well, the reason I was asking is because we've got budgeted for maintenance department as well. I'll set up, try and look that up. But I think it was only around $38,000, and that's quite a bit less than the $48,000. I don't, I know Greg had mentioned getting a smaller truck, maybe like a Ranger or something like that, but are those any cheaper, really, or they...
The Mavericks are, I actually talked to Greg before I come here today, and they cannot get no Rangers as of right now. No pricing, nothing's available for a Ranger, only a Maverick.
I think the city has some Mavericks. I think I've seen one with the city.
Is the Maverick smaller than the Ranger or not?
Like I said, it's a little bit smaller. It's kinda like the original small Ranger. It's kind of like the original small Ranger.
Is it more of a car chassis than a truck too?
Yeah, pretty well. They're all wheel drive or front wheel drive, whichever one you choose.
For the longest time, we could not afford pickups at all. We could hardly afford them. But now all of a sudden, it's just like complete 180.
Same with a lot of the equipment that was hard to get. So when I talked to Greg about it, I was curious if he had talked to you. And so apparently he did.
Yeah.
So I know a lot of them seemed like it was six months or longer to get. And that's just wanted to see where he was at in the process and he's been in contact with you. Okay, very good.
Is this, they probably haven't indicated how long it would take to get it.
No, they haven't. It's too early to tell. Till we order it and then they'll tell us. So we're at number one, we're going to get it.
With that 550 that we ordered, it was like two months.
It was in less than a month, I believe, when we ordered it. And all of a sudden, it just showed up.
Now we can't get the equipment to put on, so it's just
It could have been nine months from now when you get it too.
Yeah, you got to tell you when you can get it, so.
Can you work with Greg then?
Yeah.
Okay. Like I said, I know y'all have been talking to each other, but I thought it was take a lot longer to get. So that's why I really wanted to get on it early in the year.
So this truck has the, what package does it have? It's got a little better package on it?
It's a, it's a work truck, but it's updated. So it's got the aluminum wheels on it, so we don't have the rust issue. And it's got a chrome bumper, LED fog lights, rear window defroster on this one.
And it's a half-ton truck, so it'll be have a little better capability for
Correct. That's, I don't know what their plan, plan is, if they're going to haul anything with this Maverick or, I don't know. You know, you don't want to get a pickup too small and you can't
Yeah.
Use it either.
No, I think they haul trash cans. I mean, it's used mainly at the sheriff's department. So I think it'll be up to Greg and staff to figure out what they need, so.
But if you would want to quote-unquote piggyback off of this, it's, it would be the exact same
Yeah, exact same process.
Well, when I saw that was on the agenda, that's what I was wondering. I knew we didn't put that much in his budget for it, so we'll have to talk about that. If he's wanting to go something bigger, then he's going to need more money.
Yeah. So that's about $10,000 more probably than the other one maybe.
This is out of
I'm sorry, yeah, this is, this is out of
806.
One seven, sorry, yeah. Out of the courthouse department portion, yeah, 806, yes.
All right, you all good with it then? Make a motion to approve the purchase of the 2024 Ford F-150 four-by-four crew cab through Joe Mokins Ford.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you for all that.
Thank Tyler.
Thank you all.
Okay.
I do have one thing to mention if
Yes.
We got time.
Yes.
Tonight and tomorrow night, we have our stormwater project meetings. And I don't know if y'all mentioned that earlier when you were doing your announcements.
We did and I meant to.
Yeah, it's tonight and tomorrow. Alex had an article in the paper today, appreciate that. Just highlighting, hopefully we'll get some public come out and just look at it and see what we got going. So tonight is the Westview Heights area watershed. Tomorrow will be the Bender Lake, Notchess Trace area. And both at St. Martin City Hall from 4:30 to 6:00. And just drop in, open house, come and go as you please. No agenda or anything like that, just come check it out, ask questions. The goal would be to get some citizen feedback and very quickly move to the next phase and get some engineering contracts going to do the final design of the preferred alternative. So I would expect to have that done by the end of the month. And I know we're on a tight timeframe with the ARPA funds.
Yes.
So we got to move really quick on this.
How much did we set back for this ARPA? Do you have that up?
A little less than 1.2.
1.2 million, yes.
So we have about $250,000 and some change in study
Yes.
fees or costs. And then there'll be engineering costs as well. And so whatever we have remaining would go for actual construction.
Got it.
And I think, and the ARPA funds, and maybe it's a conversation we need to have pretty soon as far as what their deadlines, when do we have to have things obligated and encumbered? I've heard end of the year. I've also heard November, October.
End of the year is part of it. We can check on that yet. I know Missouri Association of Counties is trying to log for extension. I don't know exactly how that works.
Apparently, there's a lot of political subdivisions asking if there could be extensions on this. We haven't asked for that, but organizations that we're part of apparently are hearing from members that it's going to be an issue. So whether or not that gets extended, but basically it has to be encumbered by the end of this year and paid by the end of '26.
One comment I would add about that is as we start developing specific to what we're doing, stormwater work, a lot of what we're going to do is going to be working in Corps of Engineers regulated streams. And we are having a heck of a time getting through the regulatory process through them. It's a federal agency. And so much so that it might be challenging to even get a jurisdictional determination or approval or Corps permit from them. And they've even indicated that the Corps of Engineers will not review an area or whatever until the entity or whatever owns the property, which is a little weird because it's hard to go down a path to do a project and get the property if you're not, if you don't even know if you're going to get the Corps permit to do it. So there's a little bit of back and forth that doesn't make sense in our minds, but that's being held up at the federal level with the Corps of Engineers. And they've, I think this is a rule shoot of, so they had the Supreme Court case that basically ruled against the waters of the US and all that. And so the Corps was trying to take a real aggressive stance to regulate anything that had water in it, roadside ditches and everything. Whereas the original intent was navigable waterways. Well, a little creek is not navigable. So there's been a, maybe a, going too far one way. And so I think the outcome of that was that most of the streams that we're going to work in, especially with these smaller scale stormwater projects, are not going to be regulated by the Corps of Engineers such that we have to mitigate it. And it's almost like there's a little conflict going on there too. So with that, we need to be real careful about where that's going and if we can get an extension or get some sort of
Okay.
understanding of, if the two are going to, you know, if the ARPA, the federal ARPA and the Corps of Engineers, everybody's going to cooperate together. We're even hearing like DNR is going to start requiring separate water quality certifications. Used to be it just automatically went with a four permit with the Corps, but now that might be another step too. So the regulatory process is a bit worse at a time that it's going to make it challenging to get these projects.
I have contact with the commanding officer of Kansas City District if we want to go meet with he and his people.
Eric, in working with or on the Harland port, we've engaged an engineering firm out of Quincy, Illinois, and they're doing some studies right now on, and they're on like daily contact with the Corps, but it may be a different office of the Corps than what you have to deal with. But I'd suggest Paul Sampson at JC Rep is, probably got them on speed dial right now, but it might be helpful. I don't know.
Yeah, I know like Bar Engineering and Berlin West, they're both in contact with one of the projects. So they're hearing that information. And I think for us to actually design a project and have it ready to bid, I don't have any doubt that we can do that. But if we, if we're held up by regulatory, whatever, for example, the South Brook Stormwater Project, that's been, we've been waiting for years to get that one going because of this whole Corps of Engineer procedures and then also the federal requirements with CDBG. And that's my concern is that there's going to be some regulatory process that's going to hold us up at the federal level.
Okay.
Anyway, just wanted to mention that, that we need to be really watching that as we go forward and maybe form this and have a conversation with that.
Okay.
But regardless of that, we'll find out, we'll, you know, we'll come back to you after the meetings or make some recommendations on which projects to pursue and move that along as quick as possible in the one that we have some deadlines to.
Yeah, Boone County, I think, just finished dispersing ARPA funds, I mean, just within the last week or so. Anyway, okay, anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn and stand in recess until 4:30 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.